Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Great.
I guess we're the first ones on, so.
I think so. Happy New Year.
Yeah, happy New Year to you as well. Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. Good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Finally got this to work.
So I guess we've moved to Zoom from WebEx.
Yeah, I don't know, I know the town uses WebEx, but maybe Zoom's just easier to navigate for Lisa.
We tried to get like a good fire going in lawn chairs and sit in a circle, maybe that'll work better. That's a proposal.
Hey Lisa.
Hi.
How are you?
Ah, I'm okay. My server is down at my, I'm still at my office, so I can't get on on the computer, so I had to do this with my phone.
Oh, that's frustrating.
Because it's just one of those days. I haven't done it on the phone in so long, I'm trying to remember how I can see more people. There we go. So it looks like it's five o'clock, do we have everybody? I think so. Well, I say we get started, right?
Let it rip.
There's Charlene, right, I mean, we can totally get started, but Charlene I have as a name?
Charlene Rand.
Yes. And Maria not?
Maria won't be coming today, she's sick.
Thank you.
And this is Mary Beth, I'm here.
Thank you so much.
I can't see anyone, but I can see me.
Is that Joe?
Yep.
Are you on your phone?
Yeah.
If you swipe to the left.
You're back.
You can, I think you'll be able to see who's ever talking.
All right, that's good.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you. How you been?
Good.
All right, good to see you.
You too. All right, well, let's call the meeting to order. And I believe we just did the roll call, so I think we're covered there. So we need to review and approve the minutes from the last meeting. Guessing everybody had a chance to look those over, any questions or corrections on those? So does somebody have to help me out, it's been a long day.
Somebody has to make a motion.
Motion to approve the last minutes.
Sure, I'll move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Well, second.
Great, thank you. So then, next on the agenda, under Old Business, is to vote on the draft of the bylaws. I think you should all have a copy of that attached to the email.
Yep.
Any feedback or input on that?
Looks good.
Thanks for your help, Kate.
Yeah. It was minimal, but.
Hey, it was very helpful to me because I was feeling a little bit in the dark. Okay, so again, can we have someone make a motion to approve the bylaws?
Sure, I move that we approve the bylaws for the Youth and Social Services Board.
That's second.
That's something we have to vote on, or it can? So maybe a Mary Beth question? Maybe not. Okay.
The one, the one thing I just want to say is that Mary Beth and I can't make motions or second motions because we're employed by the town, so, so the four of, five of you have to do that, so that's why we're so quiet when you guys are doing it because we, we can't say anything.
It's a big learning card for us.
Yeah, what do you need us to say, just that we, we make a motion? Is it that, is that what you're looking for? I think it's, I'm quiet because I don't, I'm like.
I know, nobody knows what we're doing.
Right, yeah.
It's all right.
We'll get there, we'll get there.
Right.
Yeah, so just if, yeah, just make a motion and then somebody to approve, and then somebody has to second it.
Yodokie.
I think ordinarily, after the motion has been made and seconded, if there is debate, that at that point, that's when debate comes into play, I think, with Robert.
Okay.
I think we already are, said that everybody's fine with that stuff.
Oh, Mary Beth said she can't unmute herself. That's why she can't answer any question.
Well, we are just gonna fly through this the best we can. All right, all right, so let's, the next item on the agenda is any other old business to come before the board? And if not, then we'll move right along to new business, which is the budget review.
So everybody should have in their packet the department budget, so it's not a big budget, there's only actually two areas that I change numbers in. The rent for the food pantry is always consistent, that goes to the church, so that never changes, I don't touch that. And my salary I don't touch, that gets done by the finance director. So the only two areas that, that I work on are the counselor line item and then operating expenses line item. And if you're looking down the budget, you can see what gets, why there's the certain amount of money in each line and what it gets spent for, so let me know if you have any questions on those.
I just have a question about, just because I'm not familiar with the program, how many interns are there typically?
So currently, we typically like to have three, like that's my sweet spot number, but we have had four and we have had two, so right now currently we have three, we just had four, but one graduated in December, so now we're down to three. I'm in the process of interviewing for this coming year because our URI master students complete, or graduate I should say, in April, and we have new interns that come on in April. So right now I'm interviewing with URI for their new cohort, and there's six students in that MFT Marriage and Family Therapy cohort that are up for interviews, and actually all six have reached out to Ledger Doos Services as one of their top three pick sites, so that's, that's huge and that's great. Yeah, so I have a busy week ahead of interviews.
Yeah, great. Very good.
Nice.
I was also wondering, I was reading over the budget and I noticed there is a part about the KidTrak software, I was wondering what that exactly is and what that entails.
Yeah, so we use a software called KidTrak, it's not great, I'm not gonna lie. But it was a software that was suggested by the State Department of Education, which is where we were getting our grant money from a few years back, and they were encouraging all youth service bureaus to kind of use the same type of software program to like document cases, to keep case notes, to do like tracking of clients, because we have to write a report every year at the end of the year, and they were hoping that we could just like pull up the information from this KidTrak program and insert it into their report that they want us to do, it never worked because that's what the state likes to do. So we spent money on this program and we spend a lot of money on it every year, and it doesn't do what they originally wanted it to do, but what we use it for is for case notes, so after we see our clients, we have to write a note, a clinical note, so we document our notes on the web, sorry, there's like a fly in my room. And then we also keep our treatment plans in KidTrak's, and we can access it remotely if we need to, if one of the interns is working from home, they can still write their notes and they can still update treatment plans.
Nice.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the budget?
That's good, thanks Kate. So the next agenda item is any other new business to come before the board?
So I just had one question for when we do meet. In the past, when we've had the social service, a social service board, I've kind of written just like a basic report for the board to present to the board on like the case, like the number of cases that each intern has, and I have myself, so you can kind of keep track of how, what the numbers look like. Also, any meetings that I've attended or trainings that I've done, or any like upcoming information, like the interviews with the interns and stuff like that, so just some basic information, pretty short report. I wanted to know if that's something that you would like me to continue doing, and if there's information you specifically want on it for next time, or if you just want me to do like the normal report and then we can just kind of add it and edit it as we go to, if you want more information or less information.
I think I'd find it helpful to have a report, you know, just so we have some basic idea of, you know, what's going on, and I find that helpful.
Okay. Any other information that you want on it besides like caseload totals and meetings attended and just pertinent information?
Well, I mean, whatever you think is, you know.
I'll start with whatever I would normally do, and then we can, if there's more information you guys want, just let me know and I can add it to the, to the report as we go along.
Yeah, I think what you've done historically has been fine, Kate, and it is helpful to have, especially with so many new members on the board not really having, you know, the knowledge of what actually happens, so that'll be great.
Sure.
Thanks.
I have another question, if that's okay, and actually, I don't know if it's out of order, but going back to the bylaws, just in terms of our duties and responsibilities, as far as providing outreach and community education, when and how do we go about doing that?
I think during COVID, that's a little tricky.
Yeah, right, that's right.
But I know like in years past, and Lisa could probably speak to this too, there've been kind of concerns or areas that the board kind of wanted to focus on or wanted to address within the town, or get like information out to the town about certain things that were going on or happening, or educational stuff. So we kind of looked to the board members to help us kind of disseminate that information to different places. And any ideas of how to do that as well? So it's kind of a work in progress, and as things come up, we can definitely kind of triage how and what we would need. But obviously in Zoom time.
Right.
Yeah, I know in the past, we actually had invited speakers to come to the meetings. There was a person I remember from the bank, we were talking about trying to get some like free budgeting information out to people that were signing up for support through the town.
There were some that came from United Way.
Right, yep.
Yep.
So I think everything is just a little different right now, but it is good, I like you know, to actually review the bylaws and remember why we're here and what we should be doing, so we just have to get creative, and if any, I think this is the perfect time in the agenda, if there is anything, any board member thinks that maybe we could research on and, and present at the next board meeting, this would probably be the time, I think that, Kate, you probably have the best information as the trends of the needs in the town, since you work with people directly.
Yeah, it's still hard though, in the Zoom world, to really get a handle, because I'm not, it's easier when I'm in the schools to, and talking to like different teachers and just like running into people in the hallway to, to kind of get a better feel and a better pulse of what's going on in town, like being secluded in an office and just seeing the same group of people day in and day out, it's harder to get an overall sense of where the struggles are.
Can I jump in, I'm unmuted now?
Yes.
Sorry about that, I had to hang up and then call back in. I don't know what that was all about. But anyway, you, I did hear that you were talking about reports, and I could do the same report that I was doing prior as well, Lisa, would that be helpful?
That would be great.
Okay, and then, you know, as far as people who need some assistance, I can give you some insight into that, you know, each meeting too.
That's perfect, yeah, I was just wondering, you know, what the trends are, like I know in my professional world, what I've seen is trying to get families, you know, up to speed with technology and Wi-Fi and phones and computers and all of those things, and I'm, I, I don't know what the town of Ledger has done in the school system, like if all of our kids have been provided with that equipment.
So I, sorry, my dog decided to join.
Got something to add?
So I work at Ledger High School, I don't work for the district, I'm contracted, however, I'm in the hallways and like I have a Ledger email, so I get everything from the town, so I am more than willing to share like where the frustrations are from parent, student, and teacher, because I, I'm a therapist there. So I get kid perspective, family perspective, and then teacher perspective and admin, as well as Jay Hartlang, the superintendent, so I, I can share that information if it's helpful.
Yeah, I think that's hugely helpful.
Right.
Right.
Just recently, the vice principal, I'm at Gallup Hill School, and the, there was some program she just came up with, I'll have it for next meeting, and it was in regards to, they're going out, they're trying to identify the needs of families and students along the same lines of technology and access and access to just basic family needs to being able to keep up at an educational level.
Yeah, there's really just like a hierarchy of needs right now for families, right? So there's people that are sick, and then there's trying to get fed and housing and education, so I do think that the scope of, you know, the, even the social services thought, we have to kind of hone in a little bit and make sure those hierarchy of needs are being met for all of the people in the town, not just the people that utilize the school system, but you know, our elderly population and our shut-ins as well, so I think that would be a good challenge for all of us to like look through that lens and see where we might bet, you know, where we might be able to benefit or look into ways to help people right now. I also have a huge concern of like the mental health status of families and just everybody, so, and this is nationwide.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I think now that, and also a little bit more about me, I have a private practice in town too, so I kind of see different perspectives, but I think when it comes to the kids, the families are stressed about like working and the whole Zoom stuff and getting, if you have little kids, getting them on a Zoom call while you're like out at work. And then if you're able to work from home, and you kind of got, so that would be like number one, and then I think, you know, if you have an older kid or someone who's capable of doing it themselves, now that the vaccine is coming out to a select group of people, people are kind of starting to stir up and not be as isolated, and I think that that's when the mental health, when people's expectations now shift again, we're going to see the mental health spike.
Yeah.
So it, it's tough, because I think, you know, there's a lot of people that enjoy virtual, right, I'm able to service a lot, speaking from myself, I'm able to service a lot more people that like don't have transportation, that can get online to see me versus driving to an appointment, but then there's the other, like you're saying, not all of the people that live in Ledger, maybe tech savvy, and then who is actually open to in-person therapy sessions is few and far between, in this area, a lot of providers are still telehealth only, so I think it gets tough in, in helping people where their needs are.
Yeah, and I don't think Facebook's a good place to try to, they're trying to, you know, I see a lot of people, like a lot of anguish, a lot of impatience, you know, you know, and a lot of not knowing what's coming next, and they can't, you know, the, some of the stuff that really, it gets to a point where they're almost venting on there because they're hurting so bad, you know, that's, that's the tough thing right now, and I know parents that have a assortment of kids that are, let's say, one's going to school, one's completely remote, and let's face it, the parent has to know all the subjects, and that frustration level at the home is really tough, I'm lucky, my son's all remote for the high school, and he's, he's diligent in his studies, and he's been easy, and I'm lucky because my daughters weren't that, so much like that, but.
You are very lucky, because a lot of people are fully remote because they're school avoidant.
Yep.
You're very lucky that your son is diligent in that way, because what we've seen is people are picking remote to be avoidant of school.
Right, right.
All that social emotional health is um, because they can pick to do that right now, and it's so tough.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering what, what kinds of things that the board might recommend or be able to do that could be helpful in terms of, of some of the mental health issues that are arising? And I think, I think somebody mentioned too, is seniors, I, you know, there are a lot of seniors who are isolated and, you know, living alone, and who are not very adept at technology, shall we say? And so I'm, you know, I think that's another area of concern too, and, you know, I'm just thinking like what kinds of things in terms of outreach or what could be done, so. Sorry, sorry, Joe, I kind of interrupted you.
Good, that's all right. One of the things I've noticed in it, yeah, from my old job up on the reservation, is I have a lot of kids that I've noticed like, like, what Lisa was, I think was saying was they've, or Michaela, one of yours was saying that they almost, it's almost like, well, it's remote, and I do this little bit, and that's sufficient where it's from truancy, but just hell with it, when school comes back, I'll start again, and some of those kids were kids that were already identified as, you know, they, they're gonna need it more, and now it's almost like they're digging a deeper ditch for themselves, and may, maybe is, you know, in contact and with the, I don't know, I was in the education department, I don't even know who the director is right now, but it's almost to a point where it's almost like maybe, you know, and technology is a challenge to some of them, if they've got grandparents raising kids and stuff, and so then there's the other thing, the elders that are taking care of themselves, have these kids around them that are, it's hard to get them plugged in because it's, you know, a little bit of a challenge to the elder, you know, trying to hook up for them, you know?
Yeah, and I, I know I've already mentioned this, but I am currently a high school senior, so I can definitely speak to some of the challenges you all are describing, especially with remote learning, a lot of students, I mean, I attend St. Bern School, but I'm familiar with a lot of the students who attend Ledger, and a lot of students just go remote because they don't want to, they don't want to be in person, and you can just turn off your camera on Zoom, you don't have to engage, and there's that disconnect, and there's not that same level of learning, because when you're in the classroom, you're forced to learn and participate to some extent, but that's definitely a huge issue now, I mean, I was talking to a few friends today who just decided to come back to school, you know, simply to attend basketball practice, and otherwise they're just remote, and it's not, there's, there's no health concerns, I mean, for some kids, obviously, but so that's definitely an issue too.
It's tough.
Is Ledger right now still under a hybrid model, the Ledger school system?
Okay, yes ma'am, however, you can pick, so if you want to be full remote, you can do that, no questions asked, and the average student is hybrid, if you, on the other side of it, you can also request to be four days a week, everyone's home on Wednesday, and there's a document that you kind of fill out and you get rated, so if you have an IEP, any type of social economic status, that wouldn't necessarily be supportive, you get a certain amount of points, and then you can go four days a week to the district as well. But there's a different, there's like a thing you have to meet.
Yeah, I just, I really feel for families, I mean, mine are all grown, but I can't imagine what I would have done even on Wednesdays, because I would have still had to go to work, and yeah, I can't imagine the challenges they're facing, so I like the idea of us seeing what, what we can do to support in this very uncharted waters right now that we're in, that we're probably not getting out of anytime soon.
I think the other piece is there's a lot of higher functioning families that have not felt long-term stress that is now feeling it, so we have just that many more people to serve that before they, they could get by, and now they just, it's a whole different type of client per se of, of the needs.
So maybe for next meeting, I think everybody brings, this, what's so nice about this group, everybody brings, you know, some different experiences from their professional world, and the, you know, connections they have in town, so I mean, I have I have some connections for the senior housing, my father's on that board, I'm just curious if there is some kind of outreach available to seniors in town, I mean, I know I spent two hours helping my mom get her COVID results on my chart plus, and she had like four accounts set up, and she was like in tears by the end, because it's just frustrating and it's anxiety ridden, and she's got a lot of support, so I know there's others that don't, and maybe we can all do a little bit of research before our next meeting as to see what's out there.
I wonder.
We could also invite Scott Johnson, who's our senior center director, we could invite him to the next meeting as well.
That would be great.
Does anyone know if they're back up and running, like the senior center, are they doing their normal events or probably not?
It's not normal, but they are doing some things, some things are virtual, some things, you know, it's, it's on a definitely a smaller scale, but they're trying to do a few things.
Are they running, do you want to? Are they running, do you want to know if they're running transportation?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think they are running transportation and I know they do have like a call system where they do call and check on seniors regularly.
Okay.
And is there still like a meals on wheels program?
There is. I don't, I don't know much about it, but there is. TVCCA, right?
Yep.
Yep, and that's, that's done through the senior center. They have a driver there and he's still delivering meals.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Not only the meals, but maybe a little conversation through the door. I mean, it's, this must be tough to be a senior and, and I can, I'm just speaking from my mom. She's still going strong at 88, but it's a conversation and being isolated really stinks for, not only at her age, she's losing her friends either to death or they're losing to, you know, they're not, their minds, the Alzheimer's or it's tough, you know, it's, it's, it's a sad time for you know, the will to, to go on. Sometimes it's questioned, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I mean, just to throw it out there and then we'll, we'll think a little bit more about it or I will because it's a little bit hard of a time. But I am a caterer, you know, I do meal preps and stuff like that, but the difference with TVCCA is they have the grants.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the, that's the difference. And then I have the capacity, so I manage Sweet Hill Farms, so we have the capacity to do fundraisers and things like that. But gathering is a little weird right now. So that, you know, so there's, there's some opportunity, but there's also some challenges. It's just kind of a weird time, but it's definitely something to ponder. And then in the warmer weather, it definitely provides like outdoor space, like there's tons of safe outdoor space for getting together, whether that be for activities in the pavilion or a social thing for the seniors if they can't go inside at the senior center. And I do have a woman that worked there that I was talking to, we were planning some stuff when all this hit and we had to, we had to stop planning that. But I'm just throwing, just throwing that out there.
Also, isn't the Visiting Nurse Association associated with Legerd somehow? And they would, I don't know if they are still making visits. I mean, there are a lot of, you know, I used to go to the senior center when it was still open. I'm in my seventies and my partner's in eighties. And you know, a lot of, not everybody goes there and there may be people who are homebound, but the, possibly somebody from the Visiting Nurses Association would know if there are people who are isolated and maybe, you know, need additional calls or something like that. I don't know if, you know, some kind of program like that could work. I know just through my congregation, my church congregation, we have a list of a lot of the isolated elderly and, you know, people divide up and people make calls just to check on people once a week and something like that. You know, that may be too broad a program to even be thinking about right now, but, but, you know, something like that could be helpful too, because I, I think there are a lot of people who just maybe need to hear another person's voice and, you know, get some kind of social support, that type of thing.
Scott could speak more to it at the next meeting, but they do have a call system like that.
They do. Okay, good.
They do.
Good.
Yeah, I think inviting him would be really helpful. That would answer some questions for the, since we do have people on the board who are in the school system. We have some direct school information, but that senior center information would be great.
Yeah, send him an email tomorrow.
Thanks, Mary Beth. Because I'm sure there are services out there, right? And there's people benefiting from them. And I guess what we always worry about is, is the, you know, the, the loners that are not connected. And those are the people that, if we don't know what our own town can do and provide and what's available, then how are we going to be able to promote that? Right? So I think educating ourselves first will be helpful.
Yeah, I mean additionally, in the report that I think Kate is writing up, will information about the current programs, you know, that serve the youth and just general social services, will, will that be included or?
Yeah, so, so youth services right now is, is only telehealth. So we're primarily family counseling, individual counseling. When schools have been running in the past, we've done groups in schools and when we are, I, I write that in the report that we're running certain groups in certain schools. But right now we're just doing individual family counseling, all telehealth. And I know that Mary Beth writes kind of the details of their program when there's any changes or additions into her report as well.
Yeah, and I think that will be helpful because many of us don't really know, right? So if we know what we are offering, I know Mary Beth has, you know, can educate us on, you know, how families and individuals get vetted to get support services through the town. That will also, I think, just help broaden like our thinking.
Yeah, and we could definitely use some assistance in reaching out to families. We did do one thing over the holidays though, and I'm kind of disappointed that it didn't generate more families coming to us. At the food pantry, they gave out holiday fixing bags to those in town who were in need and not registered with us. And it didn't generate anybody registering with us. And there was an application in each bag and that was a little frustrating. That was probably our biggest outreach that we've really done so far. You know, besides I've sent out materials to churches and to daycares. But yeah, it was, it's just getting, maybe people getting over the stigma, but just finding these families, because there are families that need help.
Absolutely is. I know the school district had that, holiday fixings for Thanksgiving and Christmas and the, you could sign up. And that was district wide. So I know that's families of school age kids. If they, because right now every child under the age of 18 gets free breakfast and lunch in district. So they had extra funding, I guess, and the food staff made holiday fixing baskets for any family that wanted one. That could have been maybe part of the low numbers, but that's for school age families.
Well, no, we had a lot of people take advantage of picking up the bags. We gave out a lot, both at Thanksgiving and Christmas. But as far as them following up and signing up with social services, they didn't.
Gotcha, okay.
And that's a good question for us, right? Why isn't that not happening? What's the barrier there? And, you know, what, what can we do maybe to help promote that more?
And our application process is very easy. And I'm definitely not strict as I should be. You know, because of COVID, you can't be. If, if you're in need, you're in need. So we really don't deny anybody. So yeah, I don't, I don't know. I was really surprised. I thought maybe after the holidays, we would get inundated with some new applicants and we didn't.
You know, I'm wondering if it's similar to what Michaela was saying, that there's a new group of people that haven't need services in the past. And this is, that's hard for them, you know, if they're, if they've ever had to get any kind of support services or they don't come from a family who had support services. That's probably a harder pill to swallow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be associated with some stigma of not wanting to appear as if, you know, they need help, which obviously has to be removed. I think a lot of teens and kids my age, you know, there's obviously mental health issues are prevalent, but I don't think as many kids as, you know, who, who need attention actually seek their attention because of the sigas and because of the, you know, ideas that, oh, you know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't seek help. So I think, I'm sure they were, the, the need was there, as you were mentioning, people, you know, obviously they'd sign up for the help, but they didn't commit to the program and it might just be, you know, because of, you know, the stigma.
Yeah, but I like to think they all have the application, they all have the information and, you know, if they need it, they know where to find us.
Yeah.
I often think that, you know, the consumers are like the best way to spread that information, right? So I wonder if we can even connect with families who are getting the support and services and tell them like to reach out to their friends or neighbors or people that they know in their circle that it's okay, you know, this is here and help, you know, encourage it that way through word of mouth.
Actually, I, I did that too for the holidays, Lisa. I put out a newsletter every month. And in there I put, if you know a family in need, please let them know that they could come to the pantry for a fixings bag. They don't have to register. Yeah, I tried that too.
Yeah, I know you do. It's tough. All right, well, any other new business? Some kind of positive note? At least we're all here, right? We all decided to join and, and try to make good in our community. So I think that's positive. I appreciate all of you for stepping forward and, and being patient with me through this learning process of, of having board meetings.
You're doing great. Did you want us to bring anything? I, I think you started sharing something about for next meeting, like any just resources that we know of?
Yeah, I think we have. When is our next meeting?
Sorry, I'm trying to write these notes.
All down in my little notebook.
It should be.
We should be.
March, right?
March 16th. Does that sound right to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, that gives us some time. I just think that if we can tap into what resources we know about or explore, Mary Beth will invite the director of the senior center, so that will be helpful. And I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we follow all the guidelines of what we have to do as a board, but we also make some steps, right? And actually do things that can benefit the people of our town. So I think we educate ourselves first and then come together with our own ideas and then get our marching orders and just see what's available for us to help out with.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thanks, Lisa.
Lisa.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks so much.
So we're going to call to an end. Somebody's got to adjourn it. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Yep.
Perfect, all right. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.